Here. Right, I'll call to order the town of Mount Desert Planning Board meeting for October twenty fifth, twenty twenty three. Welcome aboard. And those of us, those of you in the audience that weren't here last night, we worked till ten. Action packed, good to be back and let's get going. So I'll make introductions. I'm William Manley, and Chair, we've got Vice Chair Tracy Loftus Keller, Meredith Randolph, other regular members, Alan Kimerly, and we've got alternate member Gail Marshall with us. And first thing, if Dave Ashmore isn't joining us tonight, we probably should vote Gail on as a voting member tonight.
I'll make a motion to vote Gail on as a voting member this evening.
I'll second that.
All right, and where we're all in person, I guess they don't have to call us out individually anymore, but all those in favor? I opposed. Welcome aboard, Gail. Approval of minutes, we did the October eleventh minutes last night. I don't think we have anything else on that, do we?
Yeah.
No, okay, so. Nothing more recent than that, and let's dive into it, so. All right, item three on the agenda tonight, we have section two, general provisions, similarly uses. So unspecified uses which are substantially the same as or having effects the same as the uses listed in section three point four shall be treated the same as those listed uses. Similarities shall be determined by the planning board in strict compliance with the standards set forth in section six and without other pertinent provisions of and with other pertinent provisions of this ordinance. Any use or activity not listed in section three point four shall be excluded unless the planning board in accordance with section three point four determines that that it is similar to a specified use. Well, tonight we have property owner David Rockefeller Jr., agent is Noel Musson, the Musson Group, applicant is the Mount Desert Land and Garden Preserve, location is eleven Stanley Brook Road, Seal Harbor, tax map for lot fifteen dash oh oh one zoning is rural one land three, purpose, determination of use was we have packets. Kim, this, we don't advertise.
Okay. Just a determination of use so that should they go through their time, there is a use here similar and they can see for that case.
Because of that, the butters aren't notified and it's not advertised, it's informal. Welcome aboard Noel. Why don't you tell us why you're here tonight?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, it's a pleasure to be back today. We are here tonight to discuss another upcoming project for the Land and Garden Preserve. Some of you were in our discussions a couple of months ago when we came and talked about the Land and Garden Preserve working on their, they did some strategic planning about their facilities, operations and facilities plans, one of them had to do with Green Rock property where we talked about their project out there, that project, we're actually going to be in the board in November, talk more about that's the future use of for that. And the other, one of the other priorities was the Stanley Brook property, which is historically been sort of their operations and maintenance facility for more operations and storage of machinery and gravel and materials for maintenance of the carriage trails and other things that the land guard grounds at the Land and Garden Preserve has. So they want to, as part of this strategic planning process, we want to construct a new storage and maintenance building on that property. And the reason why we're here is because as of last time, there's no clear connection between the ordinance which classifies uses under like commercial, which is getting towards and then the Land and Garden Preserve being nonprofit, how do we, how do you want us to classify this particular use under the ordinance? I think we have some ideas which we can discuss. I'm also here, Matthew Bear and Jen and Teresa from Matthew's office are online. They can go into some more specifics about the actual buildings and site plan process if you're interested.
Sure.
We have this as a spread, but I think fundamentally we want to talk about the long term aspects of this project are for this to be a storage building and we're not changing the unit simple property, we're just adding a structure. And then in the short term, they're more than likely going to need to use this space a little bit for stat. As the staff gets displaced at Green Rock during the construction, we have to move a few people over there, but that's only a short term. So I think with all that being said, I'm going to let Matthew have a whack at it. He might be able to articulate things a lot better than I can, but that's what, that's what we're talking about.
Can you hear me?
Yes, welcome aboard, Matthew.
Thank you so much. I'm sorry I'm not there in person, but I'll do my best on the screen here. And just jump right, jumping right in. We just want to show you what the intended use is and kind of give you a lay of the land on what we're proposing to build and where. And then we can circle back to the how to classify this as Noel was saying. So this, this site is up on the Jordan Pond Access Road. It's informally called the pit. It's, we've been asked to call it the Stanley Brook site. And but for many years, and and most people know this as the staging area for the construction of the carriage roads. So for years gravel has been stored here, heavy machinery used for that purpose. There's a big easement on the property for the, the water for the town of Seal Harbor. And and that you can see in the water tank there, we also have some photographs. And then there's a series of storage buildings on the site. Also, there's open gravel storage bins and areas to, to, to lay down lumber and and things like that. We can go to the, the next slide if, and let, stop me if you want me to describe anything else. These are just some photographs of the existing conditions. Upper right is what you see right as you come into the site. From the access road, there you can see some of the heavy equipment, the water tank and what used to be a stable for horses is now a storage building used by the Rockefeller family. And the property is technically under the title of Seal Harbor Properties LLC. And here's a site plan that Jen has put together and kind of gives you the key components. You can see the tank and the building we're proposing is just down plan of the tank. We are proposing to put in a bathroom which anytime we have pressurized water, we need to have a septic system. So we're, we're also showing a septic location there. You can see the outline of the easement for the water department. And various setbacks because of the Stanley Brook, we have the, we've drawn in the setbacks there. And then we have side yard typical setbacks also illustrated here. All of the, just to say that that site plan, where we've located this building complies with setbacks. You know, the typical things that we would present like lot coverage and we've reviewed this in some detail with our civil engineers to make sure that we're compliant with all of the water away setbacks. And we are. So we can show you that the building plan is essentially a storage building, double height vehicular bay, a garage, a little half bath. All the water is located there. And you can see some storage rooms around the perimeter. I think we can go to the, and then in the, in the short term, as Noel was explaining, the, the plan for Green Rock, the project that we last brought to you is to actually start the construction of this first and then move a bunch of equipment and six or seven people that are currently housed there up here temporarily while we construct the project down at Green Rock on Peabody Drive. And then those people will move back into Green Rock and this will be converted to a storage building. And although it will be designed to be conditioned, it will primarily be, we're thinking that it will not be kept heated through the winter. One important detail, we're, we're putting a great deal of solar panels on the roof of this building so that by the use of those panels and panels we're installing down at Green Rock, we can make the Land and Garden Preserve net zero for electricity, which is our aspiration. And Jen, Teresa, what am I forgetting? Noel? Have I left anything out?
I think that's it, Matthew.
Okay. Yeah, I think really what we're here to discuss is what Noel brought up, which is how to classify this and how to attend to the temporary use.
The, and I think on a former slide, we saw proposed classification of it.
Yep, so I think if you went to, just as a suggestion, in case it helps to clarify, so the land is organized in a few different categories and see like if you went to page three point nine, nine, you know, maybe sort of able of a lot of uses. This is under the commercial classification, but I think that it makes sense that the existing use of that property is really a storage of construction equipment and heavy vehicles and or services three, not wholly enclosed construction. But it could also be some other classification which we can discuss. And I think there's also a few different uses that really kind of fit the, the mixture of uses that are on there, but those are the two that we sort of honed in on when we were talking about what would be the most similar. So if this were a commercial activity, that's probably what we would kind of for, but since this is nonprofit, doesn't, we have to just make that decision.
Thanks. Mr. Bear said that you're housing people, he just means they're moving their offices.
Not real, thank you. No one's living here.
So what's going to happen is at Green Rock, they're going to tear down two of, one of the building, two of the buildings that are used for these people and they're combining those uses into one building. So they're not going to have the space to work until they construct the building. So we need to put them somewhere and this just makes sense, but it's not the long term use of the property.
How do, I don't, because that's office.
Obviously isn't allowed use in the RW district, but that's what I, that's another question. I don't really have anyone to handle that, like a short term thing without having to come back. As like there seems kind of silly to come back, have a change of use. So if you want to come in as an office and then come back for a change of use.
It's temporary, right? So.
Yeah.
But we don't, don't have anything in the ordinance to say like you have a year to be in there as an office and then point a face to something else.
Right? You know, we could approve it as office slash whatever, but that, I was sort of trying to avoid in a farmer, that would be, that would be just easier not to have to come back because we don't live in a, but office isn't allowed use. We also don't want to advertise our proposal as more office space because that's really not what it's going to be. There's a lot of things that go along with thinking about office space in particular, if you advertise that as an office development, that's everybody, everyone is going to get breaked out and that is not at all.
So why wouldn't you be storage of construction equipment and heavy vehicles?
I think you would be, that's one of the uses, we're thinking that and or services three.
What the space that's going to temporarily be used as office on the second, it's on the second floor, right? Oh, first floor.
A first floor, yeah, one of the garage bays will be essentially an open office for that period. Nine months to a year is our best estimate at this time.
So servant.
Okay, so the, the, the second plan is a second.
So why, why are you thinking services three when it's not wholly enclosed construction?
I, I mean, I actually think the first use is storage of construction equipment and heavy vehicles. That's one thing that's happening out there now. It also, back at page, and today is it or two pages maybe? Found something earlier today, oh, page three dash eight, commercial, it's not commercial, but there is some bulk storage of materials right there. So it's a mixture of different uses. I'm not saying I'm right on any of these either, Bill, I'm just trying to.
Yeah.
Trying to figure it out.
I guess I'm just wondering the board whether, but the thing is that the first use of it is in the office. There's office building here.
Office is allowed use.
And how, I, I think because that's the first thing to happen that we need to figure out how to permit as an office and whether we want to have that fade out and deal with the the next use or do we have no option in our ordinance to just say you're going to have to do office now and then when you want to change, you're going to have to come back and change these?
I wonder if you can put a condition of approval on.
I mean, the whole, the whole thing is not ever going to be office. You still are going to have the heavy equipment in that building. There's only a portion of it that's going to be.
And, and again, you're only there because of another project where you're being temporarily displaced.
Correct. That is not at all in the long term plan.
So the question is, I think if you did it as storage or construction of heavy vehicles, could you condition the permit on the office, the temporary office use definitely expiring at some reason during time and then.
We could, we could estimate a timeline for that.
Yeah.
But we know like if, once we build this building, Matthew said sort of sequentially, it would be, we need to construct this. Then we can demo the work at Green Rock and then we know sort of the timeline of the construction project. So it would be, and we'd probably give ourselves a little buffer. I would say like two years is probably more than we need, but that seems like a good.
Are there lots of other? Are there lots of other expectations you would have for how a building is constructed if it's going to be office space? The concerns that you would have about what had to happen in that space?
No, I mean, it's, it's still going to have to meet the requirements for MUBAC and ADA compliance.
Right, yeah.
It's a temporary use.
I thought, I thought I saw a note on there about it not having to meet ADA compliance.
Well, that's a position.
Yeah.
So Matthew's office is already engaging with the state fire marshal's office to, to work through all the details of whether that is.
Yeah, I mean, I like Gail's idea of calling, you know, classifying the stored construction equipment and heavy vehicles, and then we just condition the office use to a period of time.
That works for us.
Yeah, good solution.
That, you know, we'll continue to do that.
So if it's that, then you guys come back for us.
And how does like a balcony, a loft? Is there any planned use for the loft?
Uh, just storage, the loft. That's a, to gain some space for storing things. No, we're not going to house people up there, not, not house, sorry, desk.
You really want to store people, don't you?
I'm, I want to make housing up there. No, I, this is open loft, uh, storage for nuts and bolts and the things that they need access to.
You think two years is enough?
I, I, I'd say maybe we're going to, when we finish the conditional use permit application, if the board determines that we'll, what the use is, we'll call it storage of materials, the storage one. And then we'll also have a note on the application and we can come back to you and say, this is what we think.
So you probably, you probably want to finding from the board on that. Please.
Mechanical shop and garage and all that, is that safe? After a real office space that you've removed, so it's all going to be dedicated storage?
I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't hear you, Kim.
I just asked, would the plans that are submitted, the mechanical shop and the garage space? Is that going to stay as a mechanical shop and just taking out the office space designation? Or is it just going to be strictly all storage and then you said it's all going to be storage?
Well, I guess we, I defer to Noel on that. I, I, I think we could file it as the if, with the planning board with our first application as the intended final use and then come back or at the same time file for a conditional use of the, of one garage space for open office plan for a period of two years, something like that. But I think the filing plans would show the permanent use.
Yeah, Matthew, I think Ki- Kim is just looking at the different labeling, I mean, the short term plan and the long term plan. And Jesse has indicated that the long term plan is indeed just going to be storage and not office. So I think we're heading, it will, will apply for a condition use permit.
So this is just going to be strictly, just designated as storage once it's moved back.
It'll be the same activity as what's happening out there now. There's, so there's equipment out there, there's materials out there, the people working out there as they go from that site out to the carriage trails, that's the activity. Initial use approval, storage of whatever. And then we'll work toward condition of approval for the temporary use of the office. Does that make sense?
So I just want a question, but there's, there's a, in, in the first phase, there's a paint shop or paint room and then that goes away as well?
Yeah, so to, to explain the labeling, there's a, the short term plan, the, those are the uses of the spaces at Green Rock that are getting demolished and then they're just, those uses have to go somewhere and they're going there short term, then they're going back to Green Rock. But when you get the green margin, you'll see that all of those uses are actually getting consolidated into one building.
You're kind of playing three card Monte, just.
Yeah, where's the dog through the show? That's, that's the shredder.
I mean, if you guys are going to planning board number eight
Yeah.
For services three.
Think so, yes.
So why is it that you might need to just be storage and construction equipment and heavy vehicles and, and services three?
Again, that's the way we.
With temporary office space, because if you have a gold, baby, you're doing the same thing that you go on the plan of one that they already started that use.
Yeah, that's why we're here. Those are the two.
So I was saying those, those two were the uses.
Services three and.
And construction of, uh, storage of construction equipment and heavy vehicles.
Sounds like a motion, Gail.
Well, are we actually acting on this or just?
I, I think you want, I think they have.
Under section two of the ordinance.
So they know.
Yeah, there's like a finding on that.
Okay, well. Let's see if I can follow this up. Under section two of the ordinance, I move that the proposal of the Land and Garden Preserve Stanley Brook Project that we make and that we will designate the project when it comes before us as a store, as a commercial storage of construction, heavy equipment and heavy vehicle, equipment and heavy vehicles as seen on page three point nine, three dash nine of the Luso. And are we, are we also doing services three? As well as services three, not wholly enclosed construction, emission plumbing, painting, carpeting, also on page three dash nine. And we will condition, conditional office space for a temporary period of time to, the length of time to be determined in the as a condition of the permit. Long enough for you?
I do still write.
Okay, so with section two of the Luso, we move the proposal of the Land and Garden Preserve Stanley Brook Project. We designate that the project is commercial storage and construction, uh, storage of construction equipment and heavy vehicles under section three point nine of the Luso as well as services three. Uh, is it section three point nine or page? Uh, three, three dash nine and condition the office space for a temporary length of time determined as condition, as a condition of the permit. I'll second that.
Right, any further discussion? None heard, all those in favor? I opposed.
Thank you.
Congrats.
Noel, it sounds like the Luso committee needs to consider adding non.
So are we, are we the only application on the ninth page? You guys want to, just not take too much time, you want to talk about application forms on that meeting, if I bring a bunch of stuff in?
You're the only. Yeah, you're the only thing, yeah. Do it. Yeah, well, I've, yeah, I, we've got that ethics thing too. We should probably include on your other as well, but.
Yeah. Don't forget comments on subdivision application. Thank you.
Yes.
Appreciate it.
All right.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Everybody.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, let's soldier on. Item three B. We have property owner Northeast Harbor Fleet Incorporated, agent is William B. Gartley, P E, Gartley and Dorsky. We, uh, it's location forty eight South Shore Road, Northeast Harbor. Tax, tax map twenty three, lot four, zoning is Shoreland Residential One. And this is also a determination of use, so welcome aboard. Why don't you summarize why you're here tonight?
All right, good evening. I mentioned that more dearly and working with the fleet on their plans for some pretty significant improvements to their infrastructure. And as we're getting started in that, we just wanted to clarify what the use was as we look through the classification table. So as I mentioned in my letter to you, looking through there, it seems that the most appropriate thing for them to be, which is a boat club and their focus is boating, both private boating and, and sailing school, which is probably their biggest focus. That the outdoor recreation is probably the best suited classification, which is a conditional use. And so in looking at that, I just want to make sure that we're going down the right path. And then when we come back to you, because we will be coming back for everything from moving their building to recreating their site to regenerating here. Um, this may be a pretty extensive application. We want to include a conditional use permit if that's appropriate.
Yeah. Yeah.
When I read this, I thought, well, I assume that people bring these sorts of inquiries to the board because there's some ambiguity about what it could or should be. And so I began thinking like, well, what else could it be? And the obvious one that jumps out is Marina. And so I began thinking like, well, what else could it be? And the obvious one that jumps out is Marina and I see that Marina is, would be a non-conforming use, which would, I presume, for sake of discussion, be grandfathered um in that area and, and you should stop me anytime you think I'm, I feel it here, so that led me to think, well, what actually does the, this organization do? And it certainly, I understand from what you say, there's the sailing school and there is yacht racing, it takes place from there. But I assume there's other things that take place there too with respect to boating and, and, and that might be more appropriately characterized as being like an arena, so I would wanna know kind of everything that you do, because when I think of like Southwest Harbor as a sailing school and I think of that, I may be wrong, but I, my assumption is that that is a sailing school soup and nuts. That's what it is, and what I don't know is with respect to this, what part of the dinner is, is sailing for the purposes of the Northeast Harbor Fleet, is it the entree, is it dessert, is it? An African little nibble at the beginning, so before I felt comfortable classifying this, I wanna know more about the full activities that you do, I assume, for example, you have a dock and members of people, the public that members of the club who use moorings use the dock to come and go, I don't know, do you have employees who ferry people back and forth to their boats, do you have all these sorts of other activities that take place that might more appropriately classify you as a marina and marinas not defined and but if you look up the common definition of the term marina, it's pretty, um, I couldn't find it.
Marina and I think.
Where, it's in the back of the order.
Thank you.
I think reading that answers that question quickly, because the first thing it says is a business establishment. And so this clearly isn't a, a business establishment, it's, it's a private club that offers sailing activities. And I think when you go on to continue to read it, you know, it really talks a lot about providing services such as boat repair and boat sales, boat hauling. Right, it may, but still, when you read that, that really isn't at all. Because we is, the fleet's really a, a similar to a yacht, a yacht club.
Yeah, it is.
Right, and so they're not in the business of making money, providing services like a marina is. Right, a marina's selling fuel, they're providing dockage, they're, they're a business. I think that definition in your ordinance clearly defines a business.
Right. But you have to pay to be a member of the three, so a club, so in that sense, it's, it's kind of the same as the last application that it's nonprofit. But it's basically a business, but it's just nonprofit, kind of, just because it seems to me. I mean, well, anybody spent time in the water knows that there are marinas that come in all sizes, ships and. The, all of the moorings and the fact that they have a launch and everything. I guess I would be surprised that it isn't a marina. That would be my. The fact that they're all the moorings and that there is a launch out to, like, the, the, the moorings and the launch service out to all the moorings is a significant part of it. It's not just a sailing school.
Right, right, it's the, I mean, it's the yachting, the racing, all of that. What they're doing, but again, it's not, it's not, it's not a business. But they're not.
I don't know, why, why isn't it a business?
Because they're not, not making, they're not offering these services for profit, right, so.
It's not, not for profit, but the same as last thing, we're, we're talking about it under commercial, even though it's nonprofit. Right, because you don't get to access free, I mean.
I guess, I'm not gonna.
I wouldn't say like the Lanin Garden Preserve is not a business or the, I don't, I like any of the nonprofits on the island, they have offices and they have people that work for them and there's, like, I don't, I don't know, I guess it's.
When you come, so if we get to the point of you coming back before us, are you gonna have two separate applications? One for the, one for the structure and then one for the pier? Or?
Um, I, I, I guess I wasn't necessarily thinking they had to be too separate, but.
Are you building, are you reconstructing the pier bridge?
The pier is getting completely reconstructed. And the building is getting moved back away from the water and raised in elevation.
The one out on the?
No, the one out is, is, is probably gonna get moved off and then put it back. Um, but the one on land is gonna get a new foundation and slid back further from the water.
So those are probably gonna be two separate applications, yeah.
Okay.
Cause it's gonna be.
A pre. Relocation of a fleet.
Cause they're not gonna be all set max. And then the pier is a condition.
And I, I don't quite know how, uh I'm just thinking, like, the question of whether they're marina, they are what they are, you're grandfather to it, there's no change of use or anything, so you're not applying to be in a marina. You know, so I don't know, you, you're applying for the construction aspect, so it's not the, what your use, well, but the last one was. I, I think what they need to determine is that their preference would obviously be to be a recreational outdoor facility, which is a conditional use allowed in that site. But if it's late, listed as a marina, it's, it's a non-conforming use, that's not allowed in that zone and therefore that would have an implication for what it is they might be allowed to do to the, to and for the existing facilities as grandfather. Yeah, I guess that, so that's my guess, that's, that's where rubber meets the road in terms of what this. I guess I, it's because. They have, I don't think is our concern actually, but I.
Right, well, that's my point is that I was thinking, well, the applications will be for this building and discussing what this building is and what it does, they are already a marina or an outdoor. They're not applying to be those things, they are those.
Correct.
So the application is, we wanna be, build this little building that's too close, you know, closer to the water, what's the use of that building? And like, the last application, we didn't discuss what they, what their what the use of the whole property was, we discussed what the use of this specific building was.
Well, for example, if they want to expand the existing building, they're gonna move it, they wanna expand it, that's gonna may well run a file of the, uh, if it's considered a marina for the purposes of the application, then it's gonna run a file of the provisions that govern what non-conforming structures, how non-conforming structures can be changed um versus if it's already unacceptable use within this district, then they may have much more latitude to undertake a more ambitious project. Is that, uh, man?
So I thi- I think where we are gonna be likely reviewing this in two separate applications and the, the application relative to the relocation of the non-conforming structure, I think we're, we're looking at a use, a very specific use tied to that very specific structure. And it would seem like the recreational outdoor facility applies to that specific building in that specific location.
But we haven't discussed what the specific buildings are, so I guess to say if it has a swimming pool in it or if it's, you know, like, what is the building? That we're talking, is it a place to store sales or is it a place to gather? I assume it's a place to gather.
Actually has, it's both, they have supplies in there, they, in the summer they gather. They have the offices for the sailing school, they meet for the sailing school in there, um, and then they just have club gatherings.
So isn't that, that a category, you know, that building is that?
Well, I think that the, I mean, my, my thought and recommendation would be that under commercial, I mean, the outdoor recreation accessory structures that support that use are allowed. So the definition itself says that if it's an outdoor boating facility, you can have a building that's an accessory use to that use. Same as, cause golf, like, the other things that are included in outdoor recreation are tennis and golf. Well, every golf course has a clubhouse, and so it's, that would be allowed as part of the golf house. I think the difference here and the distinction I'm trying to make with them not being a marina is that it clearly says that it's a business establishment and then you also have a definition of commercial use which says that they're, you're providing or selling goods and services, but the intent of making money. And that's clearly not what this is either, so it just seems like it really passes a straight face test, this is outdoor recreation.
I'm not, I, I'm actually not taking a position on it at this point, but I mean, I, I do think it's something that we need to resolve. But what we're trying to do here is to determine if this is a similar use, because we don't have a separate provision for, for nonprofits. So we don't have a provision for organizations like yours, so we're trying to determine how your entity fits into something that may otherwise talk about it being a commercial activity. Um, and I don't know how we can separate out, the enterprise is the enterprise, it includes the docks, it includes the buildings. It may include the parking lot of the hill, you own that too, um, and so I don't, I don't see how we can separate out, while the building categorizes this, but the document categorizes that, it's all one.
Their recreational.
Yeah.
So I actually think that we're not necessarily asking you to say it's similar. I'm asking you to say that's what it is.
Yeah.
Because if, if this, it doesn't fall under outdoor recreation boating, then as this is written, what does?
But I think it is specific to the structures that you're gonna be coming back to us about, because when we're looking at the review criteria for pre-existing non-conforming structure relocation, all those questions are really specific to the structure.
Right, but in the ordinance, there's, there's a difference between a non-conforming use and a non-conforming structure.
Right.
Right, and so the non, the structure, when we're gonna come back to you for, we're gonna be looking at the section on non-conforming structure.
Yes.
The, and so it is, I think, complicated if this is considered grandfather. At what point is the use getting expanded? We're not allowed to expand the use, it's a grandfather non-conforming use. But we are allowed to expand the structures.
You are.
If we can claim that that doesn't expand the use, it definitely gets really complicated, which is why we don't wanna be a grandfather use. We want to be an outdoor recreation use that is a conditional use.
I guess this is the, then other, then it doesn't the comment that it's buying and selling to make money, seems like the fleet sells the service of teaching kids how to sail, they sell the services of more, you know, they do have, they take in money, it may be a nonprofit. But it still seems to me that there, you're still having interest in taking in money and you sell shirts that have the Northeast Harbor Bergy on it, I mean, there, there is I, I, I guess I, I'm not, since we don't have anything for nonprofits, um nonprofits certainly seem like, just because they don't make a profit, doesn't mean that they're not selling things for money.
Well, I guess my, my question, the under recreational, non-commercial is just a category. What would qualify as outdoor recreation?
No, definitely not animal husbandry, there are.
Seems to me we had. Includes tennis courts, playing fields, basketball courts, golf courses, and other recreational facilities, which are not in any way permanently enclosed by a building. Of accommodating more than ten persons, may include building or other structures as accessory for such facility. I guess, I guess I go back to my, one of my original points is that it's all, I, I understand that you understand school and yacht racing and I understand why the, that's an argument that slots nicely into the outdoor recreation facilities. But that doesn't explain to me the full extent of the operation. And to help me determine whether or not it's that it categorizes as an arena versus a a, an outdoor recreational program.
What, why are, just, I mean, maybe a dumb question, but why are we hung up on this being commercial or non-commercial where the recreational outdoor facility
I'm gonna say they.
Is allowed in.
It's allowed, recreational is allowed, marina is not, and so they're, they're saying that they're not allowed to expand. If it's, if it's a marina, it's a use that they're not allowed to expand and they wanna make their buildings bigger. It's a recreational facility, it's allowed, so that it can expand, it's just a question of what's allowed in that district.
Yeah, it's, so again, I feel like we're expanding the discussion beyond the potential conditional use application you're gonna bring before us relative to the reconstruction of a non-conforming structure. And so it being martial or non-commercial, we can figure that out, but I think that a marina is gonna be too broad of a definition for this, for the specific application you're gonna have before us.
So what I'm seeing is, I don't know that, because I don't know, the question is, what does this organization do? Does this organization, is it better described as an arena or outdoor recreation?
Outdoor recreation facility, because again, I think when they, when you, when we get into the review criteria for what I understand they're gonna be before us about, it's not an expansion of use, it's a reconstruction of a non-conforming structure. And that's, you know, the, the, that's clearly separated in land use ordinance.
But it's not.
Yeah.
I mean, but it's not, just not, but it's not just a non-conforming structure, if, as you said, the question is, is it a non-conforming use?
They, they need to know what they're gonna be under in order to either. Or if they're a marina, that stops them dead for an expansion.
Yeah.
Right.
I, no, I, I, I get all that, I'm, I guess, in a roundabout way, I'm just trying to say I think you're an outdoor, um recreation facility.
And I guess what I'm saying is, I don't know that you're wrong, I'm not saying you're wrong, I just don't think I know enough from what they've presented.
Do you know, can I maybe answer your question?
Sure, sure.
What, what do you want to know?
I'd want to know what part, like I said, I, the analogy I used at the outset is if this is just a sailing school and yacht racing, then that is arguably more clearly outdoor recreation, but if, but you, you what percentage of your business, for example, or the, or the nonprofit business, um is actually involved with the sailing school versus providing services to people who keep their boats on moorings and come and go by the use of those docks. Um, and you know, what part of the organization is taken up with launch?
Okay, so I'll, I'll, I just, I'm past Commodore and I'm just part of my entire. So, um, the fleet is actually, there's two nonprofits, there's the sailing school, which is five oh one during the sea and then the fleet itself is the five oh one C seven. And so all under the auspices of nonprofit. The, um, the sailing school runs, um, from June through well, we hope for Labor Day, but it's usually the first, third week in August. And it runs Monday through Friday, from, um, don't hold me to the times it can show up, but uh, the, the kids come around eight thirty and they stay till three thirty or four, five days. Um, and, um, numerous days during that week, there are places that are run. Primarily they're run on Mondays and Saturdays. And, um, then, so the five days a week, it's all, all kids coming and, and sailing. Kids, um, people come, members come and walk through the facility and go out to their boats, either they row out to their boats, they take their dinghy or they go with a launch service, which is part of their membership. They do have moorings that they pay for, um, and, um, and the fleet, also the sailing school owns twenty terras and. Twenty terras and. Adventures and a cat boat that all the kids use. And um, and we. So the majority of the time of the week, it is sailing school. And members come and go during that time or whatever, you know, beautiful days, people. Five days, not so much. Um, so that's, that's what they do and. I didn't know if that answers.
Are the moorings privately held or are they? Owned uh, owned by the organization?
But like, um, it's a maze. But most of them are owned by the fleet. Mornings are, they're not the master, that's yeah, I think you guys.
No, I'm, I'm just, but in terms of the scope of the operation.
No, I'm voter, and I don't know what the definition of marina is in here, but as a voter. I would never consider the fleet a marina. A marina to me is something you go and have dock space. Get water and fuel, uh, none of which we, we do, we, I mean, you can come into the dock and. Drop people on and off, and then that's it. We don't have fuel. Um, hardly have water. The hose is working. So, you know, that's. That's how we are. Operation. So it says the principal use of the property for a marina is to provide such services, boat storage, repair, boat sales, boat modeling and launching, bait. Bait and tackle sales, sale of marine supplies and marine fuel. We do none of that. But, but we don't do any of that.
Right.
There are some kids bringing down some chicken or. But docking facilities and moorings is not your principal use of that. Property. No, it's a a use, but not a principal use. Our goal in the sailing is. You would say that sailing school is. Principal sailing school is a large percentage.
Well, the, I I just, I don't want to belabor the point, but the first sentence of marina is a business establishment and we've got. You know, that the similar use thing going on here, having frontage on navigable water and providing for higher dock. Docking facilities, so you're paying for those docking facilities or moorings at its location unless such other uses are incidental to the principal use of the property. So I think there's an argument there. I'm not saying it's the right one. I'm not saying it's the right one, but there is a lack of clarity about what this. Is that's all.
In the directory of marinas.
Right.
I guess, you know, it's, you know, it's a private, it's a private club.
Right.
And I've kind of always thought that yacht clubs were somewhat owned by the membership.
Right.
And that's kind of how they are.
Right.
So public cannot go there.
Correct.
So. They were a marina is public.
Yeah.
And this is.
Right.
Who's up, so.
Mister Man- Manteco, you've got your hand up.
Yeah, yes, thank you. I just wanted to make a couple of comments if that's okay. Hi, um, Howie Motenko is my name. Um, I just wanted to say that, you know, I understand that the building that you're speaking about. Is not necessarily marina of sorts. But I I do believe the fleet is in business as a marina over Clifton Dock. So that the actual corporation of the Northeast Harbor Fleet. Does own a marina and does do marina business, right?
Um, I can clarify that as well. Clifton Dock is not what we're talking about. We are talking about the Northeast Harbor Fleet property. And that is a five oh three uh, seven, whereas Clifton Dock Corporation is different. And it does sell fuel, but they're a separate entity. And that's not a part of our discussion today.
Wha- what entity are they?
Who's that?
You said they're a separate entity. Are they separate from Northeast Harbor Fleet?
Correct. It's a. So I don't know if I have the right term, so. Held in, held it by the, maybe held by the fleet. I don't know which one holds the one, but there, we're not talking about. Clifton Dock Corporation. They were just talking about the fleets in the zone and the use on that property. We are not talking about Clifton Dock at all.
They're two separate properties.
Separate, separate properties, separate tax maps, separate um, entities.
I have my hand as all as well. It's Donna. I'm also on the harbor committee as well as Howie is on the harbor committee. Um, does the, does? Doesn't the Clifton Dock Corporation own the moorings in front of the fleet though?
No, that's a good point. But that was, that's not, I don't know what, I don't sure what you're asking.
I'm just stating that they are combined and it is the property in front of the fleet. The moorings are owned by the for-profit Clifton Dock. So they're not separate properties is my point, I guess.
Yeah, I I I believe that is right, but I'm I'm. I'm not sure the relevance, we're talking about the land.
Okay, I guess the the reason I'm bringing this up is, you know, there's some concerns. And that um, I think that the harbor committee might be able to particularly John Lemoine, the harbor master. Might be able to shine some light to clarify a a lot of this in terms of parking and moorings and. Is it a marina? Isn't it a marina? On all of those, all those things that are seem to be confusing details.
Only asking for what clarity on the existing zoning as it's written?
Isn't this similar to how we've handled the Land and Garden Preserve in the past? Where the Land and Garden Preserve is a five oh one C three, you know, it's a broad organization with multiple properties doing multiple things. And when they've come before us in the past, it's been about use specific to. Certain structures like they were tonight. And if I again, understand your potential. Conditional use of vertical application before us, you're gonna come back before us for appear. And you're gonna come before us for a non-conforming structure. And um, we, you know, I still feel like, you know, the. The discussion is is a good one. I, it's maybe a bit broader than it needs to be because we're gonna be reviewing that application. Specifically to the, about the structure before us. And so why aren't we?
We need to know what their use is.
Yeah, so that's what I'm getting at. Why I think we should just be telling them, hey, look, for that specific application. Pending application before us, yes, classified as this and.
Because I don't feel like I have enough information to say that.
Yeah.
That that's been presented. I kind of wish that this letter had actually, and. Cuz obviously this is a thin question, otherwise you would have done the ball. She would have just filed. The application under that provision. I kind of wish the. Two sides of it. Of the issue had been drawn out for us in advance, so I didn't have to sort of figure it out. Or fair it out here. And again, I don't wanna say that I think it's a marina. I'm I'm not saying that. I'm saying I wonder if it's not more ca- accurately categorized as a marina. And I. Don't know the answer to that question just yet. I personally don't. I think there are arguments that it's not, and there's, but I also think there are arguments that it is. And it has great significance to you. I recognize that. Not because the building would be a non-conforming building, but because the lot, the use is not conforming. In that zone. And that has great lots of other implications. I think you have a valid point. I'm confused. I, I I'm also confused cuz they read a. Description of marina for this business. And then you read a different, which is the first sentence. I read the same thing. That's just the first sentence.
Maybe.
I think when you look at that marina definition, I mean, it, I mean, the first thing it says is a business establishment. And then even when it goes on to say navigable water. Finding for hire docking facilities or moorings at its location. The next piece is really critical because it says unless such uses are incidental to the principal use of the property. And so. The boat club and the sailing is the principal use of the property. It's hard, I think it's hard to argue that. And so the moorings are an accessory to that, which this says, and if that's the case, then it's not a marina. Then when you go on to read everything else that says maybe may make it a marina. They don't do any of them.
Right.
So I feel like you've gotta work hard to say it's a marina, where you don't have to work hard to say it's outdoor recreation bowling.
But uh, we also were just told that the that the fleet on the property you're talking about is broken up into two nonprofits. That is, is two, and the sailing school is one of them. But then the other one, just the fleet itself, isn't the primary. Use of that. The use of the moorings and the the racing around and the.
Your.
And the third, the for-profit moorings owned by the Clifton Dock that are outside of the fleet on the same property. Um, in the water, those moorings.
And they're access from the launch service, so that becomes problematic.
And other consideration is parking as well.
How about we ask them to maybe try to describe the proposed reconstruction of the non-conforming. Structure project of it more.
I don't, I don't think that, well, I don't think that should matter to us right now. Um, cuz I I think we have to decide what it is.
Well, it's the chicken and their egg, essentially.
We're not planning expanding the structure.
You're not expanding it, but you're gonna be relocating it.
Right, to make it more informative.
So why, why are you concerned if it's declared, if it's designated?
Probably isn't going to make a difference in what we're proposing, because we're not proposing to expand the structure. We're not exposing, expand the use. The dock, we are proposing to widen just a little bit to make it easier to get. Supplies and things down there, so it's gonna go from probably six to ten feet wide. That's the only thing that's getting expanded. So it probably doesn't make a difference. It just seemed like it would be worth it while we're going through this process. To clarify it, and it also seemed pretty straightforward and logical, so. It seemed like it was worth saying when we come to you, all knowing what we are saying we are. But if. If for some reason. It was determined we're a non-conforming use. Where a grandfather non-conforming use, you know, posing to expand it. So. We still go forward as planned.
Is you, you don't anticipate this will allow you like to expand membership or that sort of thing? Okay.
You're gonna be coming before us under section four point three for non-conforming structures. They're not coming before us for non-conforming uses. Unless we classify them as one. They're not coming coming before us for non-conforming lots.
And they just need to know their use.
Right.
They don't know where they are.
Well, it's obvious that you don't either.
But we can't apply for any permits or do anything.
Because we are entitled to to hear the, if there is an opinion of the code enforcement officer and give that some deference.
I said.
I just wanted to say one other thing now that I've heard a little bit more about all of this and the history. It sounds like, um, you know, if you just take it as the single building. And the fact that, you know, there's a little, you know, there's a little bit of mooring rentals, but the majority of the activities are sailing activities and. Racing and whatever else there is. It it reminds me a lot of whatever Seal Harbor Yacht Club is. So maybe if you could just look and see what their designation is. That might help.
I don't think they do.
Sorry, sorry to cloud the issue. I was only trying to make a. I'll stop.
Thank you.
So Ken, you said at first you thought it was a marina?
I thought to me a lot of it, and I read her the definition and cuz we were trying to classify the use.
Okay.
But then we looked at, I looked at yacht club with the dictionary.
Uh huh.
And more is down below outdoor recreation.
Okay. And the dictionary term marina is extremely broad and.
It is, and if we don't have a definition in the ordinance, we have to go to.
Correct. Right. Okay.
But they don't do, sorry, but they don't do. But a majority of what marina definition is in our ordinance. It says may, that is typically what a marina is. Look at Ales. As an example, there's no way they're like Ales.
Well, I think of just northeast start like in the harbor. You know, you've got the harbor master's office right there and docks, it's. I would say that's marina, but they don't, they don't offer the majority of the services. It's moorings and and docks. That there, there's no, they don't haul boats out. They don't, there there are different services around that do that, but. Do they provide fuel down there? It's a, it's a. You have to go up to Clifton Dock to get fuel, so.
Just provide fuel. Dice Arts in Southwest Harbor.
Oh, yeah.
It's a real marina, but.
Right, there, there are big marinas that all all have all the services, but I. Yeah, but like the harbor.
What's the, what's the zone that the marina is in? The shoreline commercial?
That's what, which one?
Right down here, yeah. These guys are in S R.
They're in S R one, presidential zone.
I think the other thing too, though, is that the public can't, can't just come here. I think when you think of a marina like the one you just mentioned, you can. Any voter can call and go, but that's not the case here.
Well, I think of the one that the over in Brooklyn that. That is, is the basically the Brooklyn Harbor is dominated by the Brooklyn, Brooklyn, well, the. But there's a little yacht club, and that's where everybody comes and goes from.
Yes, that's kind of outside of the harbor, but yes, it's right there.
It's a private.
It's a private entity.
Private entity and everything.
Lots of times yacht clubs are more a restaurant. And you also have a boat there. And that's really their commercial part of it. The Northeast Harbor Yacht Club, you know, they don't have any of that. They have a clubhouse where people meet. And when. The sailors out on the water run into each other, they go and have protest meetings. And they hash out their differences, and that's half of what yacht club does, and they have parties after races. But.
Yeah.
They're, but they're all private, you know, you can't.
I don't, I don't know that that may get, making it private for public is the distinction that a marina is, oh, my point. Because we're trying to determine the similar use. Right, right, so. But, and I guess it's, it it'd all be fine except for if somebody came back and says, you know, you didn't. Say that they were a marina, but sort of like, well. Yeah, no, no, we know that they're right on the water and they have all these moorings and people come and go and it's it's access and. Yeah, well, they have a sailing school, but yeah, actually, like, a lot of the boats out there aren't sailboats. They're motorboats. And they offer launch service and so why didn't you qualify it as a marina?
But I think, you know, it's. All boats there have the recreational purpose.
Yes.
And say like at at Dice Arts. Uh, a a lot of the boats are commercial.
But I don't think that matters.
I don't know.
I mean, I mean, there are so many different marinas. There are so many.
I can see how this is recreational.
I can too, but um, yeah. Yes, okay.
Non-commercial recreational, that's how I see it. That's what the fleet is. It's non-commercial recreational. They're out there to go yachting.
Except. Except the point that I raised is the moorings out front are commercial for profit, profit. Owned by the fleet and Clifton Dock. Um, have John Lemoine, um, you know, he he knows a lot of the answers to a lot of these questions that are being raised.
So I'll just mention that, you know, the harbor committee has ordinances, just like the planning board has regulations. And in there, we have a bunch of definitions and uh, I'll share my screen real quick. And so I brought it up, or I tried to bring it up, uh. Yeah, so here it is, so here's the Mount Desert Town Ordinance, and here are the definitions. And they have one for marina, if you're interested. And it, they say that a marina is a dock or basin providing dockage for small vessels. And that's, that's what our own defines as marina based from the harbor.
That's the harbor committees.
Yes. But for that help, you know, and there's a bunch of other definitions in here too, and so.
But but can I, but we're coming, we're just asking to be named. From based on your zoning, which is the zoning that we have to come to. And utilize in order to ask you the right question, so we need to fall on your definition. Not somebody else's because we have to follow your rules. And we're all simply asking for is to name us. Um, because we've been here hundred years old. We're a hundred years old and we're, we haven't been named because your zoning came in after we were born. As a place for people to gather and go sailing.
Right, there's no doubt that the use you're making of the property now is. Grandfather, as the term is, and that's fine, so it's permitted because you were there before. The question is, what is the? And I assume that that's the reason you're here, is that the the decision about whether it's categorized as a marina. Or an outdoor recreation is has consequences potentially. For what you may be able to do, it's not a dry academic exercise.
But I ask you this. When you name whatever facility or whatever, you're you're naming it because of what it does now. Not for any future question as to what it may do. So we have to just know what we are so that we can ask the right questions down the road. So if you were to go to um, you know, uh, the home store and and they're, they were registered as. Something that didn't make store or not, you would, you wouldn't ask yourself, what did they plan to do there? You ask me, well, what are they now?
Well, and that's what I'm asking now, is that right, what are you doing in marina? Or are you, are you more appropriately labeled as a marina, because I realize you're a blend of of. Or are you more appropriately labeled as an outdoor recreation?
Based on your definition.
Based on the loser definition, not.
A business, a marina is under Luso is a business establishment. Having frontage on navigable water, providing for higher docking facilities to moorings. At its location unless such uses are incidental to the principal use of the property.
And I think there's two big keys to that sentence, one, we're not a business establishment. And two, the youth of mornings are incidental to the recreational voting.
It's not incidental to. Yeah, and we just, uh, we just discovered that the, that some of those are actually for profit. That that people.
For profit, the money goes back into paying for the the. The primary uses of the facility, it's not like somebody's making money off of any of this.
Has some of their moorings out front of the fleet.
But the the income from those supports the programs. It's not like this is a business where somebody's.
I mean.
No, no, I mean, all all nonprofits do things to to bring income.
Yeah.
Again, we're trying to figure out how to deal with a nonprofit, which you are. In the context of an or- an ordinance that only talks about businesses or private residences. And that's why we've got the similar uses provision, and we're trying to figure out. How we under, because both the recreational, outdoor recreational facilities and the marina. Are under commercial sections in the ordinance, so that's not just. Whether it's a business establishment or not, or what kind is not dispositive of what we're trying to solve here.
For non-commercial outdoor recreations in there, it's not this commercial.
Yeah, we're 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 looking at outdoor recreation under non-commercial. Very specific.
But I think that that is like people's private swimming pools and, I mean, what we've used that for in the past, we're like. People wanna. Develop a whole thing on their private property.
Well, it's an outdoor recreation, right?
Yes. I guess it's not a question whether this is outdoor recreation, it is, it's really just a question of whether it's not a marina. And you you keep on touching on these spots where it, and I guess.
As a yachtsman, I'd say it's not a marina. I am a professional retired.
Yeah, I'm married to a boat builder, I've spent my whole life with sailors, I mean, it isn't.
And I've lived on Southbound Manhattan for decades.
Yeah, it's. I'm I'm married to somebody on the harbor committee.
I've got two moorings and no boat.
If you, if the chair wants.
Yeah.
I will make a motion. That we should categorize this as an outdoor, non-intensive, uh, outdoor recreation facility such as dock. Under on page three point three dash seven. And you can act on it and we'll see where it end up.
I'm sorry, can you say outdoor, non?
I haven't made a motion yet, but, okay. I move that we categorize, because I don't think, I think we're just spinning around, so. I move that we categorize the. Uh, Northeast Harbor Fleet at forty-eight South Shore Drive as an outdoor, for the purposes of the Luso. An outdoor recreation facility such as the tennis golf, boarding, swimming, and non-commercial. Uh, as as written on page three dash seven of the result.
I just would like to say I'm not. Ready to vote yet.
Okay, well, if we don't give a second, then we won't be voting.
Okay.
I'm just gonna move forward.
Yeah, no, I know, and what I'm stuck on is I, with that we've had, we keep on having information revealed that the applicant didn't tell us about. And that's what really makes me hesitate, is to discover that Cliff and Doc does have. Does own a for-profit. And part of this organization. That there is a for-profit connection between the fleet and the Cliff and Doc, and that Cliff and Doc owns some of the moorings. And makes money off of some of the moorings that are used through the fleet and that.
Right, I'm saying I don't care if it's for profit or not, I think, I think we're trying to determine if it's like. A for-profit or not profit, that's that's all, one of the issues.
They're make, they're taking income off of providing moorings to people to go voting. And I guess I would say that's the primary function of a marina.
Right.
So we've got a motion.
We're gonna have a second.
But I don't, I guess. I just don't feel solidly like that fully.
Well, what what else would we need to know in order to?
I'd be more open if I didn't feel like we were getting squeezed into the answer and that. Information kept on coming up because it makes me feel like.
What is it you want to know? Yeah, I mean, I just like asked Gail, what does she want to know, who do you want?
Um, I guess it's more that, uh. Yeah, but the full, the full picture had been presented at first, that there's, that Clifton Dock is at all, that is for profit and that it's connected. And what is the relationship between Clifton Dock and the fleet, that there are two nonprofits. You talk about the sailing school and everybody's going out sailing, but there are lots of motorboats out there, and that people aren't all showing up to go. I understand there's, there's the sailing school and then there's the fleet, there's all this organization and you've got us focused on the things you want us to be focused on.
Okay.
Um, because you don't want us to categorize it as a marina and the fact that.
I I don't know that that's, um, I think you're, we're trying, we're just asking, and correct me if I'm wrong, and I didn't, um. I was here just to listen, but um, my understanding is that we don't know what we are, so we're asking you to tell us what we are. And we'll answer the question. But um, the question with regards to the mooring, I had not considered that the moorings are run through Clifton. But the, the facility that we're talking about and we're asking to be named is is the fleet. Which is the the property and what it does there, so. Clifton is at Clifton. And the fleet is is for the members and and for the Santa School, so there's. And that's what we do on that property.
But everybody who has moorings gets out to their moorings through that physical property.
Yes.
And they use the launch service.
Main, that's not our, and.
Who who owns the launch service?
The fleet hired the launch drivers.
And has owns the boats.
Pays and owns, yeah, the fleet pays the launch drivers, the sailing school pays the sailing instructors. And the reason that there's a sailing school that's a five oh three C three is for tax donation to. Keep funding it so that we can buy boats and get the kids out on the water and. So any money that comes in goes back into boats and goes and pays, only thing, only body who makes money is the instructors who get paid. And a general manager, I was on the board for seven years. And um, I got a teacher, you know, that's what, that's how we run, all right, so. That's what we do there on that property. And I, I, we were trying to blindside you with regards to the moorings, I honestly hadn't put the. That together in terms of of the thought process, but the fleet. The fleet itself at forty forty-eight Shore Road is is what it is, it's a place where members come. And they go down, they get onto their boats, however they get on, and the kids come down. And they go out and go sailing on the boats, yes, there's, of course, there's power boats, everybody, some people have power boats to get out to their sailboats. Um, and so they're they're in the mix, but that's voting. That is the definite, you know, that is what voting is, is to get on a boat. Um, so sailing can be considered sailing or power voting, um, we could, we just use the word voting more generic. So, does that answer your question?
Well, I guess it's. It it isn't any doubt to me that this is. Outdoor recreation. My question is, is it a marina? That that we've been dealing with it either or, and I don't think there's any doubt that it does fall under outdoor recreation, the question is, does it also qualify as a marina? And I'm not seeing that it clearly doesn't qualify as a marina. And you have said all you want us to do is name it. But then when we start saying it's not really not a marina, so. Then you get all tense and you don't want us to go there, but that that's.
I don't know, I don't, honestly, I have no idea what the ramifications of one name or to the other are, I'm just trying to answer the questions. And um, and I think that in order to go forward, that's the reason we're here, is we're just trying to work with you. To so that when we come to you down the road, we have a baseline understanding, because we're so old, we've never been named.
We're 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 trying to frame this so that we don't have this discussion every time we we come back. Is it, is it, is it this use, is it, it's grandfather, what's grandfather, what wasn't grandfather? This is, this is purely us trying to streamline the situation and get be proactive rather than reactive. To what we're gonna be coming to down the, down the road. Um, it it makes a tremendous amount of sense to us and and we think to to the board and to the community to have it. Designated as the outdoor recreational, gives, it gives everybody the most flexibility, we're still gonna have to come back. To you, the board, for all of the things that we're gonna do for the, for the building and for the, for the beer, and. We'll we'll bet that, but it will now be under a set of circumstances where the ground rules have been laid. Before we get into the game, and I think that's all that we're trying to do here.
Get us to tell you that you're not a marina, even though.
You can tell us a marina, you can tell us we're a, you know, we're a gas station. What we're, what we're trying to do here is to establish what those ground rules are going in, so that when we come to you. If if we know it's gonna be a marina, then great, we know that there's gonna be a very contentious type of 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 a situation because. To your point, what's a marina? Um, you know, are we, are we doing this, are we doing that, if if we're, if we're going under the um. Outdoor recreation uh guidelines, then again, we know, we know what those rules are, uh, and.
But the fact to me to my point earlier is. Just look at what we are, and I will have to answer any question you have and define us. You're on navigating, you're you're, if if, like I said, the home shore was never designated as a commercial building, then you know. You need to do that.
I think that we have to define this in a way that protects the concerns of the tech, you know. The concerns of the planning board. You know, what what it is. That we don't um, lose our authority.
Do. Are there, have we dealt with properties with multiple uses?
Have it in the shoreline zone, if there's multiple uses on the law, it's got to meet the residential requirements for each use. But inland, they don't have to, but I'm sure you, you know, I can't think off the top of my head.
But you can, you, yeah, you can say in this situation, it's not, we're not discussing an either or, because it's outdoor recreation. It's just whether it's a marina or not, and I guess it's the, it's on navigable waters and it provides dock facilities and moorings. To the location. It's the, is it incidental, I don't think it's incidental, that's a primary aspect of.
Let me, let me flip something here if I could, um. You're right that it's our obligation to. Try to accurately, you know, implement the the Luso and protect the interests of the town. How, and but I I guess I'm trying, I would now try to ask myself, why would the town or the neighborhood. Be disadvantaged by it being labeled as outdoor recreation versus marine? So so just flip my my.
I just, I just think too many people in town are gonna come back and say you didn't qualify that as a marina. It's docks and it's moorings and they've been fighting for more moorings and they, you know, there there's all sorts of.
Well, that I'm not gonna speculate about, but but I just, I mean, what people's opinions are, I.
I mean, look at, think about like what we um.
I still have a motion on the floor.
Yes, yes.
I mean, I may have oversimplified this, I mean, to me, you know, I I looked at this, I looked at the table. And on the commercial, it said marina, so I went to commercial use, I read the definition. I said this isn't a marina because it's not a commercial use. I mean, the definition says that it's a commercial use is to to produce income. And so I just didn't get into overthinking it, I really just simply went.
And we just said, said no, we gotta have categories for nonprofits, because we've run into this plenty of times where.
So I certainly didn't intend to cause.
They they fall in the category of commercial, but they're not commercial, and it's the same sort of like. We we've dealt with nonprofits as commercial. We haven't.
We'll figure it out.
So Gail, Gail's got a motion on the table.
What's the second?
Nobody likes.
Yeah.
Thought you might.
But I'm, but your, your mo- motion is to categorize it as outdoor recreation.
As a non-commercial outdoor recreation.
But I don't say, I still don't think that that specifically says it's not a marina. Cause I would agree with that. But I still think it might be more.
So we've got a really specific motion on the table.
Right.
Can you, you have that to read?
We've got a second, so I guess. Now we discuss.
Um, may I speak again, it's Donna Reese from the harbor committee?
Please.
Okay, I was just, you know, it just seems like there's a little bit of confusion and a little bit of possible. Um. Lack of information, as Meredith had pointed out, that, as I suggested earlier. Wouldn't it be great if we could consult um. With, or you could consult with um, the harbor committee or at least John Lemoyne, who could answer a lot of these questions. Because if you're saying you would like to protect the town's interest, um. I think that he could shine some light on, on a lot of this, and I mean, I just happen to be an active. You know, I'm a neighbor of the fleet also, but I just happen to be an active member of the town, so I happen to be. Listening to your meetings, I enjoyed your meeting last night as well and most of all your other meetings. Um, but I think that it would really behoove uh, the planning board to speak. Directly and have input from the harbor master as well as the harbor committee. Since it seems to be questioned. Since it seems to be questionable about commercial versus not commercial and mixing nonprofits with for-profit. And honestly, I don't think you can say that. Since there is a commercial piece, that you're not getting income, because that income you may be reinvesting, but that still is income. Um, so I think this is, it would be very helpful to everyone to to gain in input from. Either the Harbor Committee or or at least John Lemoine, and that's just my opinion.
Mr. Chair.
With all respect, I I I don't tend to agree with that, because I think the question is, as as was just shown to us. The definitions in the harbor ordinance are not the same as the definitions in the Luso, and we are here. To breathe life as best we can into the Luso, and I don't. Think that we should be. I I don't see the advantage to outsourcing. Um. Input to other entities in the town over zoning matter. I more information would be fine, but. I don't, I don't know. And I'm not hung up on whether it's commercial or not. It's it's we are trying to determine whether this is similar. Not a commercial operation, but it's similar enough to a commercial. Marina or a non-commercial. Outdoor recreational area.
A business, we're not concerned that it's got an intent, established having frontage on applicable water, which is. Providing for hire boat facilities, they provide moorings for money.
Hmm.
Uh. Dock facilities, moorings, that is located. At its location unless used, the use is incidental, which lots of people are not in the sailing school. Uh, for the principal use of the property, to me, that. Yeah, that is what they are. That is exactly what they are.
Are you guys a five oh one C three?
The sailing school is, and the fleet is those uh seven.
Hmm. So we got a motion, a second, here we are in the middle of discussion.
I don't think. I guess it's, I'm not concerned with this vote that is outdoor recreation, because there's outdoor recreations certainly happening here. I'm particularly happy to note on this, I think we have to have a vote as to whether or not.
It's a marine.
It's a marine.
So we can make that motion the next one.
Yeah.
And then do that.
You're right. Let's remember what the applicants here asking of us.
To name.
Hmm.
As as one of them.
Is it one or the other, or it can it be, can it both? And could it be both?
Well, that's what I, why, why I asked.
Said, if you look at section, sorry.
Multiple uses, multiple proper. Multiple uses of similar profit.
Yeah, because it seems to me like you were saying, like, some of the. The building uses might be for outdoor recreation, and some of it might be contributed.
That's what I'm getting at.
Start on six fourteen.
Meredith, that there's multiple entities.
Which start from providing the lot wholly outside, sorry.
Multiple uses, and what I think they're gonna be.
Providing the lot wholly apart, she lives in the shoreline.
This is specific use.
Multiple structures, and one, one, ready that's growing unit, principal governmental, institutional, commercial, or industrial structure or use. Or combination thereof is constructed or established on a single parcel that is wholly or partially within the shoreline zone. All the mental requirements shall be met for each additional dwelling unit, principal structure or use. So if you do two uses, they need two acres, four hundred feet of shoreline.
Oh, I was wondering where you're going with that.
Oh, I see where you're going.
Because because.
You're gonna say it's a marina, that's one use.
Because that's what you, because what it said was that we're gonna have to do a shoreline zone.
And then the second use you're saying is non-commercial outdoor recreation, so. I don't know. Uses in the ordinance, they're all established.
Where's where's this in the ordinance that you just read?
Six dash fifteen, under multiple structures, which all those uses in the same category.
Because we just, the the last one, we just discussed, they're doing office and. They're in line, so that doesn't.
Remember, if it's classified as a marina, that's not a permitted use of this.
That's the difference. That's the, that's the sole difference here. And it has implications, and I do respect that, so.
I think we're almost there.
Well, that's annoying.
So I think I'm gonna call.
Okay. Oh.
I'll call it individually.
Do you want to hear the motion?
Yes, please.
Uh, uh, Marshall moved with Mr. Carolyn seconded to categorize the Northeast Harbor Fleet. Um. For the purposes of, what was the? Do you remember what you said? Because that was a decent miss. As an outdoor recreational facility, as noted on page three dash seven.
Non-commercial.
I'm gonna show, yeah, not her. Okay.
Maybe just maybe it is that.
Hmm.
We have a real problem with the whole commercial versus non-commercial, not having a designation for nonprofits.
Well, we can't solve that except the similar uses provision of the.
Well, the the outdoor recreation fa- facility is like if they're thinking, this is like private home, private. Individual people's homes, and they wanna put a swimming pool, like that's how we view this category, is just individuals want to do swimming pools or. You know. Task force, that's what we, and the non-commercial is designated, like it's not a ton of people are using it, it's just a family and private. And they're saying, well, this is a private club, so it falls under that. That non-commercial, I'm like, but it's got a lot of people, and they're paying money to be there.
Are you saying that under the section two similar use provisions, it should actually be a. Graded as like a commercial recreational outdoor facility?
I would say that that better fits it before we're paying money to be there.
It is, so we, both of those uses are permitted in in this district with the same conditions.
So I would, if 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 that is what sentiment is, I would be glad to amend my motion to refer to. Um, Merthel. Under the provisions of section two, uh, specifically regarding similar uses. That is. Um, lo- is like an out recreational outdoor facility. As as described on page three dash nine of the Luso. A commercial recreational.
So you amended your motion to it being a commercial recre.
Yes.
Versus a non-commercial.
Accept that.
I think it's non-commercial, it's like nonprofit.
We don't have anything.
We don't have, we don't have a category.
Just saying it's similar to.
It's similar, it's similar, and that's in both of these places, that's what we're doing.
And I think they take in money. People aren't there because they own the place, they they pay money. And they pay, so that means it's.
So we have an amended motion. Alan, what do you think about the amended motions that you've seconded the first?
I I guess I'll I'll second it a second time.
It's clear, it's it's clear as mine.
So it's a.
So then under the provisions, section two regarding similar uses, that is similar to an outdoor commercial recreational facility under. Uh.
A similar use. Right.
Okay. Under provisions of section two regarding similar uses, this is a similar use to.
Good, let's. I know, I know it's kind of redundant, Heidi, but again, we're just talking about use.
Similar use to an outdoor commercial recreation facility uh per page not three dash nine of the Luso, yes.
Yeah. Right, we got a motion, a second. We've had a healthy discussion, I'm just gonna call the vote, all those in favor. Hi. Opposed? There you go.
Thank you for finding that. Do you want?
You wanna make a marina motion?
I I mean, I. It was, it was putting it into commercial voting, that it has commercial voting.
Yeah.
That made it like, they're doing their basic, their.
When we're making motions, we need to be making them in the affirmative, not, so.
Well, you know, yeah. Well, we could have a vote. Because if we have resistance to a a motion to say that this is a marina and all very against it.
I don't think we need to.
I I I do think that one of the enduring lessons of this is something that I felt when I was reading in on what Meredith mentioned, which is. I would prefer to have somebody bring an issue like this before us and say, on one hand, it could be this, on the other hand, it could be this. Here's the arguments in favor of this, here's the arguments for this, I've decided this way. Because of these reasons, none of us have to go, but wait a minute. That's all, I I just think it would be more helpful.
You, you know, one thing too is that um I was um can't mute her.
I can't mute her.
Oh, hey, story, can you mute yourself, please?
Please.
Thanks.
Alright, well, thank you, thank you all.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, um, hey, one thing too is that, you know, the board is allowed to attend the land use. Advisory committee meetings, and thi- this is where these uses and policies originate, you know, and.
That's kind of negative and all.
Yeah, so you know, we've got stuff like.
Is there a regular uh happening of like, because I always feel like the agent, and I'm like, oh.
Luso, they they come up randomly.
Next one's another.
I just need it.
So it's not, it's not a free.
Bashmore Planning Board, you send on that, Chris?
Um, Dave and I are.
You're you're on there as well.
I'm on there as well.
And I'm now attending the meeting.
Yeah, so we.
I mean, I'm on the.
It it's changed because it's the land use advisory committee meeting and planning board, so all of us can attend, it's not one of these things where. You know, there can't be more than whatever it is, two of us, yeah, every meeting's public, so I'd I'd encourage everybody to. Attend.
I feel like we're the ones who go through the code and and deal with it all, and it almost should be, other people can join in, but we should be.
It would be very useful to have planning board people on the Luso committee.
But the Luso committee should be the planning board, and other people can.
Well, it's helped. So that's a, that's curiously where the planning really occurred.
Exactly.
Like, you know, Luso advisory was comprised by the board, it's like, they wanted us to have a. You guys didn't have time to do our initiative.
But I've made multiple suggestions, many times, without going to the meetings, I've. Not to give Noah a hard time, but I've I've mentioned many things, we've discussed many things.
But Noel should not be deemed the operative person who runs those.
No, but the the like things that we.
No. You know, in any way, it can be.
But it just, it.
Yeah, because I'm the one that works in the Luso, and I'm the one that recommends the Luso amendment. And then, of course, the state statute and stuff changes that we have to implement, it's right, changes in our ordinance. I bring it to this Luso advisory group today, I bring land use changes every year. Yeah. The shoreline also has those exchanges, like, we always have two butt days. But I, those board, those those meetings and the agendas have been changed since. I can't even remember when, to add the planning board on the agenda, because it's a public meeting and we have to advertise.
We we need to have a presence there.
Yeah, yeah, we've always had Dave, and that's fine, Monday's working for you, so now Alan Kelly's on the board, he's the advisory group, and.
Well, I'm just wondering, as the planning board, whether we shouldn't be. Running more of a, like, a list of things that come up, that that we don't piecemeal out, that that we as a. You know, any one of us could kind of keep a track, that it's more of a, here is what the planning board, because we. We come up with it, and then it just passes, and we forget about it, and the information doesn't quite, you know, my ideas. I don't think it happens like that.
Well, I think that's okay, but but I, but but I, there's a good argument to be made that there needs to be significant and comprehensive reordering and re restructuring of the land use zoning ordinance. And that's gonna be a Herculean task, and so it should be a separate committee. Because this board doesn't have the time to do it, but obviously, input, and whether I'm on that committee or not, I sit in that chair. And if I wanna say something to the committee, I say something to the committee, and I think we should all feel free and empowered to do that, whether we're sitting. They're very open to hearing people's perspectives, particularly people who may have some additional knowledge, because they're serving on this committee.
I'm sure we can put stuff on the agenda.
Yeah.
And have it brought up.
We can.
And that's probably the way we should do it, is have it put on the agenda for the Luso.
And it should be posted if multiple board members, of yeah, planning board members attend, correct?
It is. It's published in the paper.
I didn't notice.
All the post offices and the town office, all the website, it's. But what I mean is like, if there's three or more planning board members in attendance, it becomes an efficient honeymoon.
Yeah, well, it says land use advisory group and planning board.
And planning board.
It's advertised already at that point.
Yeah.
Right.
That's that was changed.
Because we were having Dave and Bill, and then Alan came on, so I mean. It's always been advertised as public and always have been, the planning board has always been invited.
I don't see, no, this is. I think it comes to my plan, but I was not the one that I signed up for, but my.
I just think that there's a disconnect between the things that we see in those meetings, and it isn't just a matter of that that we. At the end of meetings, maybe in other, should have discussions of what do we think needs to be changed, what do we as a committee? And not wait until that, when everybody else has ideas and we've forgotten, or, you know, that that we should. Designate time, knowing that a a meeting's coming up for them. To to put time in our agenda to say, okay, what are the issues that we want that committee to discuss?
I think we can do that, but I think it's more, that's very piecemeal. And I think the larger discussion we need to have, and maybe with with Kim. Is because it's been a long time since this, this, this is constantly being amended. And is this time to have, it's to develop, to go to a comprehensive review of what would a model land use zoning ordinance? For today's standards, what would that look like, and is it worth considering? A wholesale revision of the, I mean, I've heard people concerned that that needs to happen, that this is due.
That's what we've been trying to do.
On a pump plant, it used to be updated too.
Well, yes.
That's expired, you know.
Yes.
So we need to have, and our land use zoning ordinances are comprised by the comprehensive plan. So, okay, we also did need to do zoning map amendments. Um, because the shoreline is is very different now, so that's now coming in, and it's gonna create more lots that are in the shoreline zone that currently are not there. Um. I don't, you know, I don't think there's any objections to have in workshops, that's been offered, but don't do it on a regular night of a meeting, not workshops. Like, talk about it, right, you know? I, you know, through the years, I brought up stuff that I've come across and that I've seen through the board, and also, like I said, trying to stay up on state statutes, shoreline zoning changes. And anytime I get, you know, we get those, they're always updated. But, you know, yeah, maybe we can do an overhaul of the ordinance, there's stuff in here that I feel that, you know, like fences, for instance. In the past, I've asked to have those removed from your jurisdiction, not that I want more work, you know, but it's just fences are so, you know. It's minor, you know, I mean, compared to what you just dealt with tonight, you know, and dealing with other applications that come before you. And look, look for many youth chart and say, you know, maybe this is something Kim can do. Yeah, not that I want more work brought my way, but there's some things that.
You're here, it's not like taking it away from us as in keeping it on your plate, so.
Yeah, um, but I mean, and then we can add also stuff in the chart that's not there, you know, and and I think. Yeah, um, but I mean, and then we can add also stuff in the chart that's not there, you know, and, and I think we need to add a lot more definition in our. You know, in our ordinance, you know, uses and non, you know. Uh, nonprofits and stuff, because you're gonna be dealing with those and.
Yeah, what's sufficient off-street?
But we also, I've been told, we don't want our ordinance to be like the Harbors even. It's just, this is how the Harbors was when I left, but I don't know what it looks like now, and this was fall, but.
Can, uh, can, can we as a planning board, I guess it's, is the sort of like, the feel, the different feeling that I have when we go to. The Luizo Committee, that there are all these people that are involved over there and that would this group? Be willing to have a, a meeting of sitting down and, and coming up what we think. Should be taken to that meeting, that, that all of us who, who are constantly reviewing the code and everything and. And look through the book and, and have a meeting that we set aside.
We should constantly be giving Luizo things to.
Broader question, and I'm going back to my question about the larger revisions. Alan, you mentioned that there were like, there are, I think, model documents.
Yeah.
That Luizo was looking at. Perhaps it behooves this committee, if we really wanted to get into that. To have a session in which we, we read that, those, those, that model and we discuss. Possibly the pros and cons of doing a comprehensive set of revisions. Um, so we know what the possibilities are out there. Otherwise, if we keep just putting Band-Aids or patches on the, and keep building. Um, the ordinance higher, the revisions higher and higher, are we actually coming up with the best product that we can for the town?
There's so many different avenues that come before us. It's hard to get everything in a Luizo.
Oh, you, you, yeah.
But I feel like that, that is a discussion to have. With the Luizo Committee, whether they really want to take on that hurdle. What I'm talking about are the things that we've discussed during planning board meetings, little things come up and knowing. It just seems to me to make sense for this board to have at the end of a meeting, knowing that there is a Luizo. Committee meeting coming up or that, that we formally sit down and discuss with each other. Anything that, that we think should get taken to that committee.
Or you guys email me and I compile a list and then add a here, regular planning board hearing, then under other, we.
Yeah, because I think it's us discussing it, like bouncing our ideas off of each other.
I mean, one of the things we need to understand is that there is an annual process for review and action on. Changes, so we can't just. Any time of the year, say, we need to do something about nonprofits and then it's gonna happen even though it's a couple, only a couple months. I mean, it's a process and there's an annual cycle.
So if I understood Noel correctly tonight, at the November eighth hearing. He's gonna come in and talk about some of the things that Luizo is working on right now.
But yes, he's, he's, he's wanting to come and discuss what's being discussed at the land use by the group committee. So that you guys are not blindsided and at, and then here it's February, you gotta vote on the articles.
Right.
You know.
But he's.
So I'm also invited to the land use advisory group meeting, we meet on our Tuesday of every month.
Right.
There you go.
Land use advisory committee is different than land use.
No, that's it.
Oh, and November second, I think is a comprehensive plan. Right?
Yes, there is a.
I just don't feel like it's personally, like, it's been. It's, uh, it's my own issue with not having gone to the meetings, but I also feel like as an individual just going, I'd rather. Take some of these issues, having discussed it with you guys and take it to that committee, saying this is what the planning board thinks should happen, that I'd rather have the discussion. With you guys that are used to, you know, we're the ones who are used to reviewing the code, that there are things that come up, rather than. Presenting it to the, the whole committee that's like, wow, that's not that important, or, you know, that they just don't have the background that we do, that it has more. Impact if we brought the issues forward.
I, I've been really surprised with that committee, how successful. Recommendations, whatever they may have been, from rezoning a lot to rewording something in some ordinance. How successful it's been going from initial suggestion all the way to the warrant generation and being voted into place. I mean, it's actually a pretty productive board and.
Oh, I think that they are, but I don't think that the issues that we talk with get there.
I'm.
Well, you know, I live on it, maybe, and I sit through your meetings, right, and I see what you guys trouble with too. I bring stuff up, I suggest stuff, I, it's not always, you know, saying yes to me.
Right, no, I'm not, I'm just, I'm not saying that there's, I'm just saying I think that it would benefit, be beneficial for us to have.
No- Noel's here on the eighth and let's start the dialogue with him and try to get some structure. And where we go from here.
The thirty.
And one, and just to change the subject quickly, um. So with Dave transitioning off on. On the thirtieth, I made the recommendation to the Board of Selectmen to bring Gail on as a full-time member. So what that means is that we have two alternate positions available. So just to put my PR cap on, reminding you guys to, you know. Anybody you can think of out there in Zoom land. That has any interest to ever be on the planning board, we do have two alternate positions available now as of. Uh, the thirtieth of October.
Don't you guys gotta vote on and then do a recommendation to the board or something?
So.
I mean, not that I don't want Gail on there.
Do we need an official?
Yeah, yeah, we probably, yeah, you're right. So I, there was a dialogue with Claire about it, so yes, let's clean that up. And have a official.
I make a motion that we make Gail well after October thirty first or whatever, whenever Dave's closing is and it's off.
As of, I, I make, as of October thirtieth, when Dave is no longer resident in the town.
Then make a motion that Gail become a full member of the planning.
My second.
All those in favor? I, and I will. I will reiterate that position to Claire to reiterate to the Board of Selectmen, so.
Thank you.
So go on to November six.
I'll try to make you sorry.
We all done, Dad?
I, I think we're done.
I make a motion we adjourn second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
It's not discussable.